Ladies and gentlemen, we'd like to call the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners meeting to order, and this morning will be led in prayer by Commissioner Turner, and Commissioners Reno will lead us in the pledge.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, Lord, thank you again for the privilege that's been afforded each one of us to represent our constituents, Lord. We ask that you be with us today as we make decisions about the budget and other items of importance to the county, Lord, and we pray for our friend Commissioner Jordan and his family, Lord, through this time of grieving, and thank you for the example that his father set for not only him, but for everyone in the community in his life and his public service, Lord. Be with each one of those individuals who are here today, Lord, and be with the citizens who might be watching at home. I ask this in the name of your son, Jesus. Amen.
(Inaudible)
Okay, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Black.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioner Jernigan.
Here.
Commissioner Farley.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Here.
Commissioner Sandlin.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner Baum.
Commissioner Coggan.
Present.
Commissioner Young.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner Ely.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch.
Here.
Commissioner Soreño.
Here.
Twenty present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We have before you a copy of the minutes of the last meeting. Do we have a motion? Commissioner Sandlin?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion we approved as written.
Second, Commissioner Farley. Any additions or corrections there being done? All of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. We have a resolution of sympathy on behalf of Lieutenant Bart Smith, and that's going to be presented by Commissioner Farley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like for Commissioner Sandlin and Commissioner Gooch to come up, being that they were from the Blackman area, and I'd also like for Clarissa to come up and anyone else that she would like to come with her. Commissioners and people in the audience, bear with me, this has been an emotional situation for I myself and my family, because Bart was a true friend to my family. Before I read the resolution, I'd like to say something. I'd like to explain to you the most important feelings between Bart Smith and I. Only law enforcement officers, fellow firefighters, and someone in the military would understand what I'm talking about. The feelings between Bart Smith and I, where I knew Bart Smith had my back, and he knew that I had his back. He knew that personally. That's what true friendship is all about. We lost Bart on June the 10th of this year, 2012, and this community lost one of the true friends that it had had. At his funeral, there were hundreds of people that come through there and the stories they had of Bart, the nicknames that they were given. I was one of the ones he called bigot, you know. He called people hun. I know Judge Davenport spoke of that herself. Bart was a true friend, and Bart was a friend to anybody and everybody in this county, and he'd done his job the way it should have been done, and I just wanted to say that before we got started. Whereas it was great sadness that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners learned of the death of Lieutenant Charles Barton Bart Smith, who served as Rutherford County's well-tax enforcement officer from 1991 to September of 2010, and retired in July of 2011 from the Rutherford County Sheriff's Office, and a friend of many, and I truly mean many. Whereas Lieutenant Smith is survived by his wife Clarissa, son Patrick, Vicki Smith, daughter Casey and Zack Smith-Roesten, grandchildren Waylon Smith and Bentley Roesten, and whereas he served in the U.S. Army in the Vietnam War and earned several medals, including the Purple Heart and Bronze Star Valor, and whereas Lieutenant Smith served as a private contractor school bus owner-operator, bus number 150 and 184, for Rutherford County Schools for over 25 years, and whereas he was a member of Blackman Methodist Church and Rutherford County Sportsmen's Club. Whereas we know that his passing has caused great sadness to his family and friends, now therefore be it resolved that by the Rutherford County Commission, on its regular session on the 29th day of June 2012, does hereby extend sincere sympathy to the family of Lieutenant Charles Barton Bart Smith. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution of sympathy be forwarded to the family of Lieutenant Smith by the clerk of this legislative body, and I so move.
Mr. Chairman. Second, Commissioner Sandlin and many others. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Well, well deserved, and thank you, Commissioner Farley. Next, we have two resolutions of recognition, both of which are going to be presented by Commissioner Schaefer. First is on behalf of Marcus Franklin, the Laverne High shot put champion.
Although it was sad in Bart's passing, Bart was a good person to know, but now these two resolutions of recognition are going to be, I think, a little bit happier situation. I would ask if Coach Al Evans and throwing coach Mark Stevens had come up along with Marcus Franklin and his family, and also Alex Young and his family. While they're coming up, these two gentlemen won the fifth and sixth state championships in field events in the last four years in the largest classification in the state of Tennessee. That in itself shows a lot for the track program at Laverne High School. Some of you love to stand over here if you want. And I'm going to ask, read Marcus' letter of recognition first, but I would ask Marcus, we just hand the discus down there to the end and to one of the commissioners and just let them pass it around and feel it. Now, a discus is just about a three-pound plate, and Marcus threw this, it's passing around, over 180 feet, so it's just something to think about. A resolution of recognition. Whereas Laverne Junior Marcus Franklin became a T double S double A state champion recently when he won the class triple A discus state championship, and whereas with the support of his mother, Tamika Cannon, track coach Al Evans, and throwing coach Mark Stevens, Marcus put forth many hours of practice and hard work. And whereas Marcus's discus throw of 181 feet 4 inches was the best throw in Tennessee all year and was only eight feet of the short state record, and whereas throwing the discus requires skill, agility, balance, and strength, all of which Marcus possesses, now therefore be it resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, at its regular session on this 29th day of June 2012, does hereby extend our congratulations to Marcus Franklin on winning the class triple A discus state title, and we wish him much success and happiness in all his future endeavors. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution of recognition be forwarded to Marcus Franklin by the clerk of this legislative body. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second, Commissioner Cook and others. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Excellent. Very good.
Alex throws a shot put, a little bit heavier than a discus, doesn't go quite as far. But I'm going to ask Alex if he'll pass it out there and let you somebody. Okay, thank you, Marcus.
Careful now.
Somebody to take it. Okay. And the shot weighs 12 pounds. I'm sorry, I forgot. Whereas Laverne Senior Alex Young became a T double S state champion recently when he won the class triple A shot put state championship, and whereas with the support of his mother, Stephanie Young, track coach Al Evans, and throwing coach Mark Stevens, Alex put forth many hours of practice and hard work. And whereas Alex's all-time best shot put came on one of his last two throws in the state championship with a throw of 56 feet 8 and 1/4 inches, and whereas Alex graduated in the Laverne High School class of 2012 and has accepted a track and field scholarship to Gardner Web University in North Carolina, nicknamed the Running Bulldogs, now therefore be it resolved that the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, at its regular session on this 29th day of June 2012, does hereby extend our congratulations to Alex Young on winning the class triple A shot put state title, and we wish him much success and happiness in all his future endeavors. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution of recognition be forwarded to Alex Young by the clerk of this legislative body. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Second, Commissioner Cook and others, again, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye. And I was remiss, and I would ask Ms. Cook and Commissioner Turner if they would come up and stand up, because they both also represent the city of Laverne. Commissioner Turner, although he lives in Smyrna, it so happens that the school is in his district, and I was... You see the difference? See what it takes to throw a shot? And I'd ask Coach Evans to say a couple words of things.
I'm one of the most fortunate guys around to be able to be surrounded by such great people, especially the students that I've had at Laverne High School in the 21 years I've been there. I count my blessings each and every day. I have been blessed more than anybody should be and more than I deserve. A couple of years ago, I bumped into a man who made a difference in my life and made a difference in these young men's lives too, and his name is Mark Stevens, and that's the person that probably deserves most of the accolades for teaching young men how to win and how to work hard and do it the hard way, which means practice and practice and practice. I'm not a gifted person, but I was taught many, many years ago by my dad and my old high school track coach that if I persevere and I work harder than somebody else, eventually someday I'll see success. And I've been able to enjoy the success of watching these young men, along with their parents too, to see what they could do with the right person helping them that knows the knowledge of it. I know very little about the shot put, the discus, but Mark knows an awful lot, and I'm very blessed to have had him come along in our lives along with the young men that I've been involved with, so I'm just really, very happy to be a part of this and very, very thankful. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you very much, Commissioner Schaefer. Okay, we have now a public comment period. We have one person that wishes to speak today, and that will be Mr. Jim Daniels, and he can come forward and tell us who he is and his address, please.
Well, I'm Jim Daniel. I live at 1407 Wall Street here in the borough, zip 37130. Been here before. Glad to see you all again, and I want to congratulate you, first of all, on choosing how you were going to go about that appeal, because it's a complicated matter. One way, if you win, you're fine. If you lose, then you might have to absorb all the things that would have come with just accepting the current decision and letting it stand. Balancing the budgetary considerations is the only thing I wanted to raise about that, and it's hard to predict. These are complicated matters. But now, because the mosque was left out of the lawsuit, that's a potential hole in the lawsuit on appeal, because A can't sue B and then get a judgment against C. Doesn't work that way. You've got to give C a chance to come into court and speak up for his rights. But of course, there's another principle of equity law that says that if you sleep on your rights and just sit by and don't do anything, you may be waiving your right to do anything later. So I just wanted to point those two things out in passing. Also, there is something important I wanted to say on the personal level. I do not personalize controversies, and something I wrote last time and turned in was taken by our learned counsel as being something that was very critical of him and of his law firm. I didn't intend it that way. And when I mentioned Josh McCrery by name, it was because he had argued something about Rule 19.01, which I had attached to the statement I made. So there are those, some of my military people say, "Don't apologize, it's a sign of weakness." To me, my motto is, "Do apologize, it's a sign of honesty." And I thank you for this opportunity to appear. I wish you all the best on your considerations of the budget, but I wanted to clear the air. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Daniels. Okay, we're moving on then to elections and confirmations, and we have, let's see, who's going to do that for us? Do we have elected?
Chairman, fellow commissioners, on your desk you will find a list of notaries for consideration for their elections. Thank you very much. I move for their approval, Mr. Chair.
And a second, Commissioner Jernigan. All in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. There is no unfinished business. We're ready to start on the reports by our standing committees. There is a purchasing committee monthly report. Do we have a motion on its approval? Commissioner Cook, and who was that second? Commissioner Black? Anyone have any questions? All in favor of that, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Now we will start the Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee report, and our able and honorable Commissioner Ely will carry us through this.
General Fund Budget Amendments, item K2A. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general fund be amended as follows. Miscellaneous county buildings from miscellaneous gasoline $2,000, county building, going to county buildings gasoline $2,000. Property assessor and reappraisal from property assessor gasoline $3,000 to reappraisal gasoline $3,000. Miscellaneous from unassigned fund balance $100,000 to judgments $100,000, as recommended by our third-party administrator for property and casualty claims. Resolve this 29th day of June 2012. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Sandlin. Any questions or discussions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Item K2B, the Ambulance Service Fund Budget Amendment. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the ambulance service fund be amended as follows. Emergency medical service, increased revenue, patient charges $25,000, increased expenditures, other contracted services $25,000. This is to pay the billing company. The company has collected more this fiscal year than was anticipated. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Farley. Any discussion or questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Item K2C, the General Purpose School Fund Budget Amendments. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the general purpose school fund be amended according to the schedule as attached here too as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim. The first amendment is to amend an additional $846,833 in the 2011-2012 revenues, an additional $124,702 in expenditures, and to increase the unassigned fund balance by $722,131. And a staffing amendment to amend $47,414 in increases to various staff and benefit line items, and to reduce other staff and benefit line items by $47,414 in order to fully fund staffing line items. And vocational textbooks to amend $483,405 from the regular ed textbook budget to the vocational textbook budget in order to fund the textbook vocational textbook adoption, and this is the year for those textbooks. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Jordan. Any questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Item K2D, a resolution authorizing a contract with the Tennessee Department of Finance and Administration for Information Technology. Whereas Rutherford County desires to enter into a contract with the Tennessee Department of Finance and Administration for the provision of disaster recovery services, and whereas it is being proposed that Rutherford County's most critical data and equipment be housed in the state's Data Center South located in Smyrna, Tennessee, which is a secure and hardened facility at a monthly rate of $1,063. And whereas the state will work with Rutherford County to develop procedures acceptable to both parties that will define and guide recovery tasks in the event of a declared disaster. Therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor be and is hereby authorized to execute a contract with the Tennessee Department of Finance and Administration, a copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, for the provision of disaster recovery services at a monthly rate of $1,063, with said contract to be effective for the period beginning July 1, 2012, and ending on June 30, 2017. Resolve this 29th day of June 2012. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second from Jernigan. Any questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Commissioners, I will be reading two resolutions, item E and I F, authorizing assistance for a firefighter's grant application. We had some discussion in Budget Committee this past week about these two grants and some questions about whether or not there was a match. In working with the C task representative who is working on helping write these grants, he has informed us there will be a 20% match. Item K2E, resolution authorizing assistance to firefighter's grant application for the ambulance service fund. Whereas Rutherford County desires to submit an application for an assistance to firefighter's grant in the amount of $389,000 for the purpose of providing funding to acquire 12 cardiac monitors and one ambulance for the Rutherford County Emergency Medical Services Department. Therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and other appropriate officials of Rutherford County be and are hereby authorized to submit an application for the assistance to firefighter's grant in the amount of $389,000 for the Rutherford County Emergency Medical Services Department, and additionally, that the county mayor be authorized to execute the grant contract for the assistance to firefighter's grant subject to it being awarded. Resolve this 29th day of June 2012. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second from, who was that? Commissioner Schaefer and Commissioner P, I believe. Oh, any questions? All right, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Item K2F, a resolution authorizing assistance to firefighter's grant application for fire and rescue. Whereas Rutherford County desires to submit an application for an assistance to firefighter's grant in the amount of $535,000 for the purpose of providing funding to acquire one rescue truck, one pumper truck, and two sets of extrication equipment for the Rutherford County Fire and Rescue Department. Therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and other appropriate officials of Rutherford County be and are hereby authorized to submit an application for the assistance to firefighter's grant in the amount of $535,000 for the Rutherford County Fire and Rescue Department, and additionally, that the county mayor be authorized to execute the grant contract for the assistance to firefighter's grant subject to it being awarded. Resolve this 29th day of June 2012. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Commissioner Sandlin and Commissioner P. Commissioner Sandlin?
So if we've got a 20% match on these two grants here, about $180,000, are we looking at the development tax, or where are we looking at, Lisa, to come up with that? Because we didn't discuss that in Budget.
More than likely development tax, she said. Other questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Item K2G, a resolution authorizing a letter of agreement with the Tennessee Department of Finance and Administration for Drug Court. Whereas Rutherford County has been notified that the state's budget for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2012 includes a direct appropriation grant from the Tennessee Department of Finance and Administration, Division of Resource Development and Support, Office of Criminal Justice Programs payable to Rutherford County, and whereas the sum of $75,000 has been appropriated to the Department of Finance and Administration for the sole purpose of making grants in the amount of $37,500 each to the Rutherford County Drug Court and the Williamson County Drug Court to be used for operational expenses. Therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor and any other appropriate officials of Rutherford County, Tennessee, be and are here authorized to execute a letter of agreement, direct appropriation grant for governmental entities with the Tennessee Department of Finance and Administration, a copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, in the amount of $37,500. set forth herein at length verbatim, in the amount of $37,500 for the Rutherford County Drug Court. Resolve this 29th day of June 2012. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second from Commissioner Coggan. Any questions? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Item K2H, a resolution authorizing a schedule of services with Tennessee Department of Mental Health Substance Abuse Services, whereas the Rutherford County Drug Court does not deny services to eligible individuals who are unable to pay for said services, and whereas the Tennessee Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services will provide payment to Rutherford County based upon a fee schedule for eligible individuals who are unable to pay. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the county mayor be and is hereby authorized to execute the authorization to vendor terms and condition, a copy of the same being attached here too as Exhibit 1 and incorporated herein by reference as if set forth herein at length verbatim, to accept payment from the Tennessee Department of Mental Health and Substance Abuse Services for payment to the Rutherford County Drug and DUI Court for eligible individuals who are unable to pay for services. Resolve this 29th day of June 2012. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner P. Any questions or discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, before I read the resolutions for I and J, the tax levy resolution and the appropriations resolution, I need to read into the record my conflict of interest statement. Because I am a retired employee of Rutherford County, I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted. However, I declare that my argument and my vote answer only to my conscience and to my obligation to my constituents and the citizens this body represents.
We have several other people rising, maybe to do similar. Commissioner P?
Because my wife is a teacher with Rutherford County School System, I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted. However, I declare that my argument and my vote answer only to my conscience and to my obligation to my constituents and the citizens this body represents.
Mr. Phillips?
Thank you. Because my husband and I are employees of Rutherford County, I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted. However, I declare that my argument and my vote answer only to my conscience and to my obligation to my constituents and the citizens of this body represent.
Mr. Serino?
I was from, a retired from Rutherford County School System. I may have a conflict of interest about the proposal to be brought on. However, I declare that my argument and answer only my conscience and application to the constituents in this body represent.
Hernigan?
Because I'm an employee of Rutherford County Highway Department, I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted. However, I declare that my argument and my vote answer only to my conscience and my constituents and to the citizens this body represent.
Afer?
I am an employee of Rutherford County, and I have a conflict of interest in a proposal about to be voted. However, I declare that my argument, my vote, answer only to my conscience and to my obligation to my constituents and the citizens this body represent.
Item K2I, a resolution-
Chairman, just one more. We're not quite through with this. Commissioner Black?
Because my wife is an employee of Rutherford County, I have a conflict of interest in the proposal about to be voted. However, I declare that my argument and my vote answer only to my conscience and to my obligation to my constituents and the citizens this body represent.
Thank you. Is there anyone else? Okay, thank you then. Continue. Ms. Ely?
Item K2I, a resolution authorizing the tax levy in Rutherford County for fiscal year 2012-2013. Be it resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Rutherford County, Tennessee, assembled in regular session on the 29th day of June 2012, that the combined property tax rate for Rutherford County, Tennessee for the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2012 shall be 2.4652 on each $100 of taxable property, which is to provide revenue for each of the following funds and otherwise conform to the following levies: General Fund, 58.4 cents; Ambulance Service Fund, 8.29 cents; Highway Fund, 1.40 cents; General Purpose Schools, $1.14.3 cents; Educational Capital Projects Fund, 4.51 cents; Debt Service, 59.62 cents, for a total of 2.4652. Section 2 explains how the business tax will be distributed. Section 3 states how the sales tax revenue will be divided as follows: Solid Waste Sanitation Fund, 60 percent; the General Fund, 20 percent; Road and Bridge Fund, 20 percent. Section 4 explains how the wheel tax revenue will be divided: General Fund, 30 percent; Road and Bridge Fund, 30 percent; General Purpose School Fund, 40 percent. Section 5, the development tax revenue will be divided as follows: General Fund, 50 percent; General Debt Service, 50 percent. Section 6, interest earned will be distributed as follows: General Fund, 55 percent; General Purpose School Fund, 25 percent; Road and Bridge Fund, 5 percent, with the balance to the General Debt Service Fund. And Section 7, be it further resolved that all resolutions of the Board of Commissioners of Rutherford County, Tennessee, which are in conflict with this resolution, are hereby repealed. And Section 8, be it further resolved that this resolution shall take effect from and after its passage, the public welfare requiring it. The resolution shall be spread upon the minutes of the Board of Commissioners, passed this 29th day of June 2012. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second, Commissioner Cook. Discussions or questions? Okay, well, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
Twenty yes, motion passes.
Item K2J, a resolution authorizing appropriations for the various funds, departments, institutions, offices, and agencies of Rutherford County for fiscal year 2012-2013. Be it resolved by the Commissioners of Rutherford County, Tennessee on the 29th day of June 2012, that the amounts hereafter set out are hereby appropriated for the purpose of meeting the expenses of various funds, departments, institutions, offices, and agencies of Rutherford County, Tennessee for the capital outlay and for meeting the payment of principal and interest on the county's debt maturing during the fiscal year beginning July 1, 2012, and ending June 30, 2013, according to the following schedule: General Fund, $76,69450; Rutherford County Economic Development, $243,777; Solid Waste Sanitation Fund, $3,818,486; Ambulance Service Fund, $10,637,880; Special Purpose Fund, $64,740; Drug Control Fund, $638,600; Highway Fund, $9,378,799; General Purpose School Fund, $279,680,771; Central Cafeteria Fund, $18,33,200; Education Capital Projects Fund, $2,380,27; Debt Service Fund, $41,651,683... excuse me, $41,651,683. Mr. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second from Commissioner Schaefer. Commissioner Stevens?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, I want to say thank you to everybody that worked on this budget. I really appreciate all the time that everybody puts into this, and we have a really good budget staff, and I just wanted to say thank you to them for that. A constituent contacted me a few months ago about our committee system. Specifically, we have some committees that meet for 10 or 15 minutes at a time. Of course, as you all know, we draw our $150 stipend for the meeting. And this person thought that some of those committees seemed redundant, or like we could streamline the system a little bit and save some money. And I asked the chairman of the Property Management Committee to put that on the agenda one evening, and unfortunately, I was out of town and unable to be there for that. But from the minutes, nothing came of it, and I had let it go after that. But a week or two ago, this person contacted me again and said, "You really need to bring this up at the meeting. I want you to do this." And so, that's what I'm simply doing. I'm simply representing my constituent. But his point was great. I looked through the numbers. If we merge property management and public works together, of course, that would be seven times 150 times 12 meetings we could take out of our budget. But the handbook says that every commissioner has to serve on two committees, so we would have to add one person to purchasing, and that way, every one of us would be on exactly two committees. So, my math shows that if you take six people times 12 meetings times $150, that would save us $10,800 from the county commission budget, and then, of course, $826 for the social security related to that. I told my constituent that this is not going to be a popular idea, but I would make the motion. I didn't even know if the motion would get a second or not, but I was going to bring it up because I want to cut wasteful spending. I don't see any justification for keeping both committees. I don't see that we, that something that's critical that we absolutely have to have when we're facing this $18 million deficit that we have, we have to look at every line item and scrutinize it and say it's critical to our operations. I would like to hear the argument that this committee is critical to our operation, because I think if we merge it with public works, I don't mind staying for 30 minutes or 45 minutes at the meeting instead of 15. But the other benefits in addition to the cost savings would be that Ms. Shelton wouldn't have to come to that meeting and take minutes. The OIT department wouldn't have to be there and film it and prepare it for replay again. Ms. Taylor wouldn't have to send out the agenda. And then, of course, as we've established, Mayor Burgess is overworked, and it'd be one less thing that he would have to attend also. So, I move that we delete $10,800 from the county commission budget, or, I'm sorry, $11,626 from the county commission budget. And if somehow this does pass, then I would offer a motion under other business to amend our commission handbook. So, that's my motion, Mr. Chairman.
Motion. Do we have a second? Second, Commissioner Turner. Is there discussion? Commissioner Young?
You know, I've served on the Property Management Committee for the last two years, and Chairman McAdoo's been the chairman of it, and we don't meet but about four times a year, and we're not meeting much right now, because the economy hasn't been big, and we're not building a lot of things. We're not spending $10,000 a year. The numbers aren't there. I mean, one thing we did do, and one thing I pushed for on property management that is new, is that the county maintenance department reports quarterly to us in property management to make sure that buildings aren't being neglected. And if there's big capital items, you know, the judicial building over here, we had a lot of problems with it. We've had problems with the jail. That's what that committee's for. When the economy comes back around, we're going to be meeting a lot, because we're going to be building a lot. And when you're talking about building a $50 million high school, that deserves the attention, and that's why that committee needs to keep in place and stand. We're very, very fiscally responsible on when we meet and when we don't meet. And I venture to say that most of the other members of property management will say the same thing. We discussed this in that meeting, and we actually had dialogue about it, and that's what we came up with in talking, is we meet as necessary. We don't meet every month just to meet just to get a paycheck. That's not why that committee's there. We meet to take care of business. And when you're building, like I said, a $50 million high school, you got to take care of business and make sure all your i's are dotted and t's are crossed, and that's what we do. So, that's why I would like that committee to remain in place and keep standing. So, I encourage you not to vote for this motion. Thank you.
Commissioner Farley?
Commissioner Young is exactly right. Prior to this commission coming on board, when the economy was working, was a whole lot better than what it is today, that committee was really busy with a lot of things going on through property management. It's not like that the committee is calling meetings. Chairman McAdoo does a good job. If we don't need to meet, we don't meet. If it calls, we just need to meet two times a year, that's what we'll do. And, you know, I don't, the insinuation that we're actually spending $10,000 a year just to be meeting, to be meeting, to me is uncalled for. It's not the truth. And so, I urge you to devote this measure, this amendment, to the motion down that I don't think is a good amendment.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Schaefer?
Well, I applaud the commissioner for looking into areas that can be possibly cut, but I've said things like this before up here, that we get so many unfunded mandates from the state and federal government. We have done nothing. We haven't taken them to court or anything. We are right now faced with nine new math teachers because of state mandates, four chemistry teachers, three ESL teachers that were mandated. Do you know how much the state gave us for that? Not a red cent. So, let's, I can go on and on, but I'm not going to take y'all's time this, that much time this morning, but there's maintenance efforts, et cetera, all this stuff. And I think we need to attack those areas before we go down to the nickels and dimes. Not saying that they aren't important, but you're talking millions that were mandated over the years that we then become normal operating.
Commissioner Jeff Jordan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate it very much. One of my favorite presidents, Dwight Eisenhower, once said, and I'm going to quote him, I don't think he's been quoted in here, at least not this month. We're going to make mistakes. Let's not make them in a hurry. And I think that's pretty sound advice. I have no idea if this is a bad idea or a good idea. I have no problem whatsoever considering it. However, I would like to point out that we've got a committee system which seems to work fairly well. It's not perfect, and I sometimes get upset with it because we forget to do things, and it works slowly. I'd rather it work slowly than fast. I can tell you that. This idea should be presented in the steering committee, where Commissioner Stevens is a member, and so am I. I don't know if either one of us will be back, or we may both be there. But if I'm there, I'd be glad to listen to the debate and discussion on that, but it needs to start in steering. Also, need to point out that if we're going to do any budget revision this morning, after having a public hearing, numerous meetings, and I do mean numerous, and a public hearing on the budget, which was just last week, and then the next night, the budget committee met again to discuss anything that happened in the, in the public hearing, where this could have been presented and was not, to wait till this morning, I think let's just, I think it's a bad idea. So, I urge you to vote against this, but let's, if it wants to be brought up, I'd be glad to entertain it if I'm there in steering to listen to it. I appreciate it, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, so when Mr. Stevens would like to speak again?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know if I misspoke or didn't make myself very clear. I don't want to eliminate the Property Management Committee's functions, just simply merge them in with the public works. I've been watching the commission for eight years, and the public works meetings are usually very short. So, when the property management issues in the future do arise, and they have a meeting where there's a building to discuss or maintenance, et cetera, the meeting, it's still not going to be very long when you add the public works on top of it. I just don't see that we have the justification to continue with that committee. I'm trying to save us money. We may not be spending it, but it's in the budget. We have other areas where we need to focus our attention. We have law enforcement officers that are, some of them are underpaid, and anywhere we can save money, something that's not required by the state as an unfunded mandate, we've got to scrutinize carefully. And so, that's why I'm doing this. Like I said, I'm just trying to represent my constituent, and this is a way that we can save $11,626 out of that, that section of our budget and put it somewhere else where it's more needed. So, that's the reason for doing this. Thank you.
All right. Is there any other questions? Is there any other questions or discussions? Are we ready to vote? Call for the question. If there's no objection, we're ready to vote. Please, excuse me, who was it? We had a second on the call for the question, so I'm going to accept that. And all in favor of the question, please say aye. We'll make it official. Aye. Any opposed? Thank you. Please cast your votes.
Any?
On the amendment, excuse me, just on the amendment. We're voting on the amendment to delete $11,626 from the county commission budget. That's what we're voting on.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Okay, record the votes.
Three yes, 17 no. Amendment fails.
All right, now we're ready to vote. Excuse me, we haven't actually voted on the resolution of the appropriations for all the various funds.
We haven't. I was just basically going to commend Commissioner McAdoo. He brought up a plan and what Commissioner Jeff Jordan was just talking about last minute last year about the employee raises. It took a full year to implement this, but it's in this package right here, on our employees for their raises. The mayor looked at it in detail. So did Ms. Lisa Nolan and the Budget Committee and all the other committees as well. And so this was a plan that was well thought out. Hopefully, it's going to mean something to employees, because they mean a lot to us. And I just wanted to commend Commissioner McAdoo in that thought last year. Appreciate it. Sorry it took a year for it to come to fruition, but here it is, and hopefully, the employees will appreciate it and approve it as well.
Okay, so we're ready to vote on the resolution authorizing the appropriations for the various funds, et cetera. So please cast your vote. Excuse me, Mr. Stevens. Again, I didn't look that direction.
Sorry, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to point out to our viewers at home that are watching this, that most of our funds are, have a deficit. The County General Fund is $3.6 million short. Solid Waste Sanitation is $1.1 million short. Industrial and Economic Development is $219,000 short. Drug Control is $119,000 short. The Highway Department's $1.5 million short. The School Fund is $9.2 million short. Centralized Cafeteria is $300,000 short. Education Capital Projects are negligible amounts, $5,000 short. And the General Debt Service is $2.5 million short. So we don't have a balanced budget. People have been asking me if our budget's balanced. We don't have the revenues coming in to pay for our expenditures. We're using reserve money to balance this budget, and we're using a lot of it, most of it. We're going to go down to the wire in our school budget. We're going down to the wire in our general fund budget. If the sheriff brings us some budget amendments, some emergency requests, the money may not be there to do those things. It's, it's very dangerous, very scary. I said this last year, I warned against using our reserve money. I'm going to warn you again against using our reserve money. I think you're kicking the can down the road. I will remind you that when we voted to build the $50 million high school, or approximately that amount of money to go to the school additions, there was a cheaper alternative to add on to Smyrna High School, finish out Segal High School, and do some rezoning, and we could have saved a lot of money on debt service that way and had some extra funds on hand. And we should have had some cuts and layoffs possibly last year. If we don't do something this year, then next year's going to be very grim. We're going to be facing a big tax increase, or we're going to be facing some serious layoffs. Smyrna had to lay off a lot of employees, and I'm afraid that's where we're going if this budget passes. And I'm sorry, I was not able to be at any of the meetings last week because I was out of town. I would have come and expressed my concerns there. But I'm very concerned about spending all of our reserve money. So I'm going to vote no on the budget. I think that we need to really look at that pay plan some more. I don't see a mass exodus of employees if we don't pass that plan. We're going to have to get a grasp on our benefits, on our insurance, on our pensions. The liabilities are just ballooning, and we haven't done anything about that. And if we don't do something about that soon, it's going to bankrupt us. If a business spent all their money like this this year, that's great, but the next year when they have their budget and don't have the money, they're going to have to lay people off or go to bankruptcy court to reorganize. So I'm just very concerned about this, and I just wanted everybody, I wanted that to be on the record as to why I'm going to vote no on the budget. Thank you.
Arlen, then Commissioner Schaefer.
Commissioner Stevens, are you proposing a tax increase today?
We can't debate back and forth now, but anyway, he answered no.
Okay. Well, I'd like to ask you a couple more questions.
I'd just, I'd rather not engage in a back and forth discourse. Commissioner Schaefer, and then Commissioner P., if he wishes.
I'd just like to ask the commissioner, we had, it was mentioned, we had numerous budget meetings this year. I, maybe things I'm remiss in or something, but I don't remember seeing the commissioner at any of those during, throughout May and June. The public hearing, there was, there was only a few, very few commissioners outside of those on the Budget Committee there. There was one citizen outside of the few that were county employees that came as interested parties at the public hearing. I just feel it's a shame that the commissioner didn't bring up his items in advance instead of waiting till the morning of levying the tax, levy for the county of Rutherford.
Commissioner Jordan.
I'd just like to point out that our revenues are estimates. We don't, you know, we have to estimate, and we have to estimate conservatively. And our expenditures, we have to be conservative on them, so we estimate as high as they could possibly be. Every budget I remember since I've been here has showed us going into fund balance, because the only way, because the revenues come in, at least where we estimate them at, are usually more, sometimes a bunch more. And our expenditures, that's the cap, they usually come in less. They always come in less and stuff. So we may well be adopting a somewhat balanced budget. As this, the county government doesn't run like a business. And if we were taxing enough to cover our worst-case scenario, we'd be getting beat up for overtaxation. I don't want to go out there and charge every penny we can possibly charge just in case every line item maxes out. So it's always going to look like an unbalanced budget, unless we just go out and overtax everybody, in my opinion.
Thank you. Commissioner P.
Yes, the Budget Committee is just going to go down the line on this one, but one thing I wanted to point out is, yes, we are using some of our, what I would call rainy day funds, but the reason those rainy day funds are there is because this commission in the past saw that there may be times when there wasn't as much tax revenue coming in. There would be bad times, and we planned for that. And we plan to use these funds in cases like this. So this is a plan. This is not something we're surprised about. We're not happy about it. But if you look at other counties and municipalities across this nation, there's a lot of them in a lot of trouble, because they weren't as physically responsible as this body's been. I just want to point that out to everyone. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sandlin.
Then I guess the last one on budget, I've got to speak. So I've seen these type commissioners come up here before, vote for everything all year long, and then get to budget, go no. You know, when the bill comes, you've got to pay the bill. And you're not for it, start saying you ain't for it. Right at the beginning, when it comes through committee, when it comes to this floor, say no. Be the unpopular one there. Say no. Say no at the beginning, but don't get to when you've got to pay the bills and write the check, say no. That's unfair to your constituents. It's unfair to Rutherford County. We've got a very good county right here, very good school system, very good jobs, very good people, very good employees, and we've got to take care of them. This ain't a popular job up here. You won by 12 votes. 12 votes. All it takes is one. All it takes is one to win and get up here, but we have a tough job, and we've got to say no sometimes when it's tough to say no. We have to say yes when it's tough to say yes. This is not a popular job. But get out of your seat, everybody, not just talking to one, and stand up for yourself and your constituents. Don't come up here the last day and say, "It ain't no good," when you just voted under, under the one right before it. You just voted for it, and now you're going to vote no. That's fine. That's fine. But we've got a very good county. I'm proud of it. Next year, you're talking about next year grazing, we may have to raise taxes. I don't know. I've been on budget, I don't know how many years here, but I've been up here 22 years, and every budget is tough. I'm a taxpayer too. I don't want any more taxes. But you know, I have constituents that have moved from up north and told me the taxes aren't high enough. Well, I'm not bringing it up. That's an unpopular thing. But let me tell you, they think it needs to be more and have more services to go with it. We've got a good community here, and we've got a good county. We're going to keep doing that. Thank you, Mayor.
Right. Is there any other discussion? If there's no more discussion, we're ready to vote. Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes.
19 yes, 1 no. Motion passes.
Okay, let's continue then. There are no reports from the Health and Education Committee, the Property Management Committee. There is a report from the Public Safety Committee, and we'll recognize Commissioner
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Also, another note before we get started, I think the Finance Office is receiving an award this year for their budgetary purposes, and we need to acknowledge that again, again and again. All right. Whereas the attached contracts between Rutherford County Juvenile Detention Center and Marion County and Madison County for housing of juvenile offenders, copies of said contracts being attached heretofore as a collective Exhibit 1, and incorporated herein at length and in set forth verbatim, are in the best interest of the citizens of Rutherford County. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the appropriate fish was foreign on behalf of Rutherford County, being hereby authorized to enter into and execute foreign on behalf of Rutherford County, the contracts with Marion County and Madison County for housing of juvenile offenders, resolved this 29th day of June 2012, and I so move, Mr. Chairman.
And a second from Commissioner Jordan. Any discussion? All of you in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, thank you very much. There's no report from Public Works and Planning, and also no report from the Steering Committee. Under any other business, I'm going to recognize first Commissioner Farley.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, I know we all have had phone calls, the mayor's office has had phone calls. Each commissioner's probably had phone calls concerning this burning that's been going on here in Rutherford County. It's an unsafe condition. It's dangerous. I know the fire department, all fire departments across this county, cities and county, those firefighters are working hard every day. And with this resolution, and I think you've got it on your table, hopefully, it will make the firefighters' jobs easier and safer by implementing this, this resolution concerning open burning. I'll go ahead and read it if that's okay, Mr. Chairman. Whereas the Tennessee Code Annotated Section 5-17-102A10 authorizes county legislative bodies to pass a resolution to make regulations in order to prevent harmful fires and smoke that shall have the forces of law when approved by the county legislative body. And whereas Tennessee Attorney General's opinion number 08-692008 WL906480, Tennessee Attorney General opines that Tennessee Code Annotated Section 5-17-102A10 permits the institution of bans on open burning when necessary. And whereas the Rutherford County Fire Chief has requested for this authority to be granted to the Fire Chief's office, and whereas the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners wishes to bestow the ability for the county fire rescue chief, with the advice and consent of the county mayor, to declare a ban on open burning in the unincorporated area of Rutherford County as deemed necessary by the county fire and rescue chief, with this, with the advice and consent of the county mayor, in order to protect the property and lives of its citizens. Now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that pursuant to resolution of Tennessee Code Annotated Section 5-17-102A10, the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners hereby grants and bestows the authority and ability of the county fire rescue chief, with the advice and consent of the county mayor, to declare a ban on open burning in, in the unincorporated area of Rutherford County as deemed necessary by the county fire rescue chief, with the advice and consent of the county mayor, to protect the property and lives of its citizens under conditions without limitations, without which they set forth. Each and every act that violates any ban, burn instituted under this resolution shall be deemed distinct and separate act that is punishable by a $50 fine, civil fine for each separate offense. Any Rutherford County agent or department may issue a citation ordering the offender of this resolution to appear in the Rutherford County General Sessions Court for a hearing on the violation of the resolution. This resolution shall take effect upon adoption, the general welfare requiring it, resolved this 29th day of June 2012. I so move, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Mr. Young, Commissioner McAdoo, and Commissioner Will Jordan, and Commissioner Sandlin wishes to speak.
Thank you, Mayor. Gary, this, this handles the, the burning situation, but there's a, is there a no burn right now anyway, right, for the state of Tennessee, or is there not?
Right now...
I mean, there are certain times you have to get a permit to burn or something like that?
Right now, between October, I think it's October 15th through May 15th, Department of Forestry is required to have, to, you've got to get a burn permit. Right now, a burn permit is not required.
Not required?
Is not required.
So you can't burn without a permit, is what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I, I think this will help some, this will give Larry some teeth. Hats off to Volunteer Fire Department yesterday, and Murfreesboro was there. We were really scared down our area, and the subdivision I live in too, because I mean, it was, it was close. It could have been very bad. It was bad for the, for the property owner over there, but, and they were just burning some trash. So I mean, and it, and it, you know, wind took a little something out into the field, and there it went. What I'm worried about is exactly what happened right there, and this doesn't cover that. And I don't know what we can do, but I know other cities and other counties have, have banned fireworks, setting off fireworks or something. I know there's a tent on every corner right now in the county and the city and everywhere selling fireworks. It's hard to say, or it's tough to say, "Don't set off fireworks." I don't have the solution right here besides saying, "Let's don't shoot them, go to Nashville, watch them, go to Murfreesboro, watch them." You know, watch the professionals where they've, they've got fire equipment there, you know, to handle the fire, but it is so dry right now. It's so dry, and in our area, we haven't had the rain as, as some other areas have had a little bit of rain, and it's not so dry. But I mean, the leaves are, are on top of the rooftops, they're on the ground, just like this right here. Normal circumstances, this fire wouldn't have happened. It would, it could have been put out real easily or whatever, but it is so dry, especially out in that area and some other areas in Rutherford County. What can we do about fireworks and people setting those off? It's going to be hard to, really to enforce that, but I'm just saying that, that's what I'm scared of right here as far as a fire happening.
In my everyday job since, I mean, where I work, I work for the State Fire Marshal's Office, and I'm one of the directors down there. This, this whole situation is going across the whole state of Tennessee. We've been bombarded with phone calls with the same thing from counties and cities across the state. The deal in Blackman yesterday, fireworks, from my understanding, is fireworks was not the reason for the fire. I think it was, it was open burning that, that caused that disaster yesterday. Way I understand it is fireworks issues are local issues. The state has, has not at this time stepped in and put a ban on fireworks. It's a local issue, and the attorney can probably speak to this better than I, but fireworks, here in the county, we do not have any legal ramifications to be able to ban fireworks. Is that not a correct statement?
Do you mean presently?
Presently.
Right. There isn't. That's correct.
What a lot of counties are doing, and I just received, I've received news articles across the state every day, and I just got one on my BlackBerry, Montgomery County is having the same issue. And what they did, they've issued a statement about telling their citizens out there to be safe. If you're going to be using fireworks, you know, they recommend that you don't do it, but if you do, you need to be safe. They're recommending actually going and watching a professional, like the Smyrna, the Smyrna deal that they have on, I think, on the 3rd, and like Murfreesboro has on the 4th of July. They're, they're recommending people do that, instead of out here, uh, shooting fireworks from, coming from the tents. Well, the horse is out of the barn, basically. The, they're being allowed to be sold, uh, to this time, and really stopping people from actually shooting fireworks, it's gonna keep every, every law enforcement officer, every fire official, or whatever, busy, and you can't, you really can't keep people from doing it right now. So, it's, it's a, it's a bad predicament to be in. It's, it's basically with the weather and with the dryness, it's like putting gasoline on fire, out there right now. And, and you've seen it firsthand yesterday, out there, with Mr. Beatty's farm, and that's going across, that same thing is going across this whole state right now. So really, intrigued to answer your question, I don't know of anything right now legally that we can do about the fireworks issue.
I have a follow-up question on that. So Josh?
Josh, do you need any further expansion of this very issue, just to see if it...
I can, I can address it, I'll, if you want to.
Well, I was just gonna ask, can we not include fireworks as part of this resolution? We don't have the authority to do that?
No, not, not, uh, not with any certainty. The, um, I'll offer a few comments. We did look at the issue briefly about...I'm sorry, is this on? There we go. Is that better?
Yeah, there you go.
We, uh, we had relatively short period of time to look at the issue, but we did look at the issue of whether or not there was some method to deal with fireworks directly, um, and I'll come back to that in a minute, but I, I will remind everybody that cities are different than counties. Cities have police powers, counties do not. Counties only have power that are best, that is bestowed upon it by the state government, and so, cities have more flexibility in terms of bans and so forth, for health and safety purposes, than do counties, um, which may account for some of the distinctions with counties maybe trying to ban things that, that, or rather, cities banning things that counties have not. Um, the, um, as to the fireworks issue directly, the only thing that I'm aware of currently in the county that deals with fireworks at all is in the zoning resolution, and it doesn't deal with shooting fireworks, it only deals with selling them, and, and permits to sell them for limited periods of time. There are statutes in Tennessee that deal expressly with fireworks, um, that are, you know, generally, um, dealing with where they can be sold, and some things like that, but there's nothing in there that allows a county to just institute a ban. Um, the, uh, so having said all that, we could not put our hand on anything that would clearly grant the county the authority to just ban fireworks temporarily, and that's, that's ultimately where we landed. So, the AG's opinion, the statute that's cited here in the resolution, clearly does allow you to bestow on the fire chief the ability to have a, uh, burn ban, um, but beyond that, it's, it's, uh, it's not clear that you could go beyond that with fireworks.
Well, I'm, I'm for this, I'm, I'm sorry.
Question, Alan was up, and I don't know, we let her ask her question yet or not?
Well, and the other part of the question is, I see that by this resolution, we're putting the authority in place with the chief, but there's no ending date. So what I'm assuming is, is that we're giving him this authority going forward, so it's not a seasonal thing, we're not gonna do this every year, he has the authority.
Right, this is actually granting him authority, and actually, if we didn't have a county fire department, we would not be allowed to even do anything. So, so that is a plus with us having this fire department, it gives us the, through Tennessee Code annotated, to be able to, to do this, uh, this here, so if we didn't have that, we wouldn't be able to do this.
Commissioner Schaefer, I believe, is next.
Um, well, you answered mine on fireworks, but I got two, uh, two other questions. A 55-gallon drum, is that considered open burning?
Yes, sir.
The second thing, it says in here, "Any Rutherford County agent can issue a citation." Who is a Rutherford County agent?
It's the fire chief, the code's department, or a deputy sheriff, is the way I understand it.
I think that's right.
Other questions? Any other, uh, excuse me, let's see, Commissioner P., I don't believe, has had a...
Well...
I'm here.
Having heard a little bit about the laws there, I don't think, at this time, that we can put a ban on fireworks, but I just wanted to make a plea to the citizens of this county, please do not, uh, you don't know what you might, damage you might cause. I mean, it's just a moment or two, you get to enjoy those fireworks, but I'm telling you, these guys that have gotta go out there and work those fires, I mean, you could cause a death, and, and not meaning to, with the extreme heats that's out there, and these guys are in this gear, and I'm telling you, I'd rather fight three or four house fires than a brush fire, like we've been seeing. With this heat, it is dangerous for these guys to be out there working this, and you could cause a death inadvertently by enjoying some fireworks, so please abstain from doing that this year. Go to Murfreesboro City, go to Smyrna, go to Nashville, there are places where they'll actually have the fire departments there, while they're actually doing the, the fireworks, but please refrain from using these. I, I know, I've got calls from constituents and some of the firefighters in my area, and, you know, we've already made four runs here in the last week, and, and it's probably more than that. I hadn't talked to them since last night, but it's because it's so dry. Please refrain.
And, and that exactly is the, is what the State Fire Marshal's Office, uh, and other local jurisdictions are asking their citizens, uh, to do that very, that very thing. I mean, it's, it's, it's unsafe, um, uh, yeah, they're, they're pretty, and they, they got the loud bones, but it's, 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 it's unsafe for the, for the community out there, and, uh, they just, please, uh, be careful and refrain from it, and be safe doing it.
Well, Josh, I don't, uh, how is the other counties? I know Dixon, uh, Williamson, maybe, uh, I know Dixon did this week, uh, on a burn. That's probably, you know, two weeks ago, you're okay to shoot fireworks, you know? And then, like right now, these past few days, and we're talking about the rest of this weekend, and Monday or so, they're saying in the 100, you know, or 99, or 100, or something. So we're talking about extreme heat right here, and, and no rain, so you're even getting drier. So I'm just, um, I mean, if you'd have seen yesterday, and it had nothing to do with fireworks, I know that, but I'm, I'm talking, people getting ready to set them off, kids are getting ready to set them off, and, and just be normal, we're shooting fireworks, and a, and a, and a friendly little thing, or a nice little neat thing that they're doing, start a fire, and it's, it could be very, very bad, and wherever they do it. And it just, uh, that was scary yesterday, that, that was reality yesterday.
Yeah, I'm gonna give you my opinion. Um, you're talking about Dixon and other counties doing it. I think, I mean, I'm no attorney, but I like, like you said the other night, I slept in a Holiday Inn here a while back. But, I think they're, they're walking off in uncharted water. I don't think there's any legal opinion, or, or, or law that gives them that authority, and I think they're walking off in uncharted water, in my opinion. You know, and the attorney can, you know, correct me if I'm wrong.
But first, I want to say, I don't think the Board of Commissioners wants me, or the fire chief, to take any action that we're not authorized to take. I don't think we should start that precedent, and I'm not comfortable doing that, when I don't know that we have sound footing, legal footing, statutory footing, so that, that's really where we are. I think other people have chosen to make public statements, and I think we can make a strong public statement, just as suggested by Commissioner P., to encourage people not to do it, but I don't believe we have the ability to tell them it's against the law and, and we're banning it. I mean, it, it appears that we don't have that standing of authority.
Maybe some folks will see this telecast, and Scott put it in big, bold letters on the front page, right there.
And I'm sure when the fire chief issues his, uh, news release regarding this ban on open burning, he'll put a strong, strong statement, and will get others to help craft that in such a way that it will send a clear and distinct message about the fireworks. Commissioner Young.
Well, the, the last three weeks have been interesting. I've, uh, I got to spend eight hours off of Poly Thicket Road in Fosterville fighting a brush fire going up the side of a mountain, I'm a volunteer in the county, and it's bad. But right now, if, correct me if I'm wrong, we haven't had a fireworks fire that we've, that's been the origin cause, yet. Is it gonna happen? Yeah, it's gonna happen. Have we? Last night? Okay, well, last night's the first, but until then, it's been open burning. And that's what we're, that's the issue right now that we're addressing, and we've gotta get this passed. We gotta give the chief the authority to do his job, and that's, you know, cigarette butts going off the side of the road are, are just as bad, too. We had one of those happen off Manchester Highway, uh, and that burned up six or seven acres. And it's gonna keep happening, and it's gonna keep happening, until we get a tropical system move in here, and there's nothing we can do about it till then. So we gotta give the, the fire chief the authority, and that's what we're voting on now, and let's, let's address that problem, and then, and address the fireworks problem separately. And I'm, I'm in agreeance, we need to do something, but we gotta have the legal authority to do it. So, um, and hopefully Mr. Broden's getting this, gonna get this out, and I, I'm sure we can get something out on Channel 19, and do everything we can to get all the public service announcements out we can, uh, for people to be safe. But open burning's the problem, and we need to handle that situation right now. Thank you.
Well, I got the flow...
Right.
Well, I got the, I'm sorry, man.
You have something else, or are we ready to vote?
Yeah. I was gonna throw this out. Um, you know, we're talking about fire safety, fire prevention, right now, Rutherford County, we don't have fire codes adopted, we don't have a fire marshal, um, here in Rutherford County. You know, that's something that we need to be thinking about, to make safe, make Rutherford County safe, you know, uh, so that is, uh, one thing leads to another, so there are some things that we need to be looking at in the future. I just wanted to throw that out there. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Is there any other discussion? All right, all of you in favor of approving the resolution that, uh, authorizes our county fire chief, from this day forward, to, to be able to, uh, declare a ban on open burning? Please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? All right, that's unanimous, and we'll look forward to the news release later today. Okay, other business, Commissioner Phillips.
This is pretty serious, and I hate to bring this up on the last day, but the ladies from the, uh, Farm Bureau had breakfast this morning, and, and was giving us berries from here, and ham from there, and eggs from every place else, and I got so confused, but, but it was really good, and, and much appreciated, on this commissioner's part, and I'm assuming on all commissioner's part. Thank you, Farm Bureau, especially the ladies from Farm Bureau.
Thank you, Commissioner Phillips, for reminding us, and Commissioner Jeff Jordan.
I certainly echo what Commissioner Phillips said, and if my wife should ask you if I had the chocolate milk, please tell her you're not absolutely certain whether I did or not. I, I appreciate that. Two things, uh, first of all, on a very serious note, a visitation from Mr. Ed Jordan is at Woodfinns today at 4:00, and the funeral services are planned for tomorrow morning at Woodfinns at 11 o'clock. Also, on a much happier note, I, I bring some greetings, I talked to him, uh, two days ago, Dr. Bob Bullen, who, uh, represented District 16 for, uh, 43 terms. Uh, no, it wasn't quite that many, but at any rate, uh, he was very interested in the budget, of course, and was an outstanding member of our Budget Committee. He sends his congratulations to the Budget Committee, particularly into the commission, and also pointed out to me, uh, something that we haven't mentioned, I don't think, in here, but you could live just a mile or so, uh, north of Laverne High School, or go across the creek on 41, and you could pay 53 cents more than you paid last year. And, uh, and he sends his congratulations, so I'm passing it along. Thank you so much for your time.
Right. Commissioner Allen.
Well, while we were on the topic of, topic of fireworks, I pulled up an email that I have from the Smyrna Parks and Rec Department, and so I just wanna give everybody accurate information about that event. It is Tuesday, July the 3rd, from 5:00 to 9:00 PM at Lee Victory Recreation Park. Um, there will be a Blackhawk helicopter, you can tour it, and also meet the crew. There are a variety of bands playing, lots of, um, mu...uh, food vendors that are there. It's a great event, all of Smyrna turns out for it, um, so we really appreciate it. If you guys wanna come support that and enjoy it there, and stay safe. Thanks.
Thank you very much. That's...any other business that anyone wishes to bring before this body? Again, we thank all of you for this support you've given over the last almost six months now, starting with the, this agenda for, of the budget, with our Budget Committee, and our Finance Director, and our Deputy Finance, Elaine, we just appreciate all the good work all of you have made, and have a safe holiday. We adjourned.